I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuizis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Chris Arland from the Capes Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the pleasure of a vision.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this time we come together. We thank you for instituting these men and women here to lead our city. And we ask now that you would just continue to keep them healthy, protect them, guide them, help them look to your wisdom when they seek how best to serve our community and the people here. Just be with them tonight, Lord, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
But just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank you all for being here tonight. We're going to start with the public comments of the items that will now be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you'll be given four minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to say that the City of Tarpon Springs congratulates Commissioner Carr on his beautiful new daughter. And that's what we all work for, better Tarpon Springs for our children and grandchildren. May she have a blessed life. I know she's got good parents. And may she have a very fruitful, nice life in her community here. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Thank you. The first item on the agenda is that a proclamation, the Commissioner Carr is going to read, on pancreatic cancer awareness month.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation. Whereas in two thousand and eighteen, an estimated five, or fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. One of the deadliest cancers, and forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer two years ago to become the third leading cause of cancer death in the United States. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in the later stages. And seventy-one percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. Whereas approximately thirty-three hundred deaths will occur in Florida in two thousand and eighteen. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer related to death in men and women across the world. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Tarpon Springs enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness of pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Jacob Carr, by the virtue of the authority vested and the Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of November, two thousand and eighteen, as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And then we are going to present this to Danny Rowland.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Susie Swenson. In January, I will be a five-year survivor. Danny has surpassed the five-year number, and Karen is not working her way up to that number. I just want to emphasize just a couple of the facts that were stated in the proclamation. Five years ago, when I was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, the survival rate for me to live another five years was five percent. Today, the number is nine percent. So we're making strides. And your participation in helping us make pancreatic cancer an important cause for people to think about. We are proudly passionate about our purple during National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, and this Thursday, the fifteenth, is going to be World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. So I ask everybody in the room, Mr. Mayor, council members, wear your purple, wear it proudly, and think of us that are fighting the battle. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some purple to help out.
Thank you.
I wore my purple.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. As you are aware of yesterday, I was released from the Florida Hospital of North Pinellas. I'd like to take a few minutes to thank the people who visit me and the ones who send the wishes to me for speedy recovery. But also, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone in the Florida Hospital, the doctors, the nurses, all the medical staff, the supporting staff, the administrators. I received the best treatment in both in intensive care and in hospital ward. The service that I receive is outstanding. We have the best team. They provide an excellent service, and I'm glad, and I'm very happy that we have a hospital in this quality in Tarpon Springs. Jason, please thank the team for me, please. But today, ladies and gentlemen, it's a special day. We're here to initiate a program for senior transportation. It's a happy day. So I'd like to turn it over to Cassandra to do the presentation for us.
Good evening, Commissioner. It's always a pleasure to be here. It's a very special night when you get to welcome a new life into the world and make sure that people can get access to health care for all their needs. And so, Mr. Mayor, we're glad you're here and you can share in this moment of providing access to health care for seniors in this community. A few months ago, the mayor brought an issue to PSTA and said, "We have this problem of seniors being able to get access to the health care and health care needs and related health trips within the City of Tarpon Springs." And we also looked at all of the innovative programs that PSTA was working on and came up with a new model of how we could leverage our innovative programs and solve this problem of transportation for seniors and access to health care. So we wanted to give door-to-door access to low-income seniors, to medical appointments, pharmacies, and grocery stores, so that they could be healthy in all aspects. We also took a look at what our partnership opportunities were and called Florida Hospital of North Pinellas, and the mayor opened that door for us to have a discussion with them about how they could partner with PSTA and with the City of Tarpon Springs to provide this service. And we made a proposal to them that we would have eligible riders, residents of Tarpon Springs, who were sixty-five years of age or older, but also had no other means in order to get to these healthy destinations. So if they were at one hundred and fifty percent poverty or less, where they could apply to get rides from PSTA's program using our innovative programs. The trips would have to begin and end in Tarpon Springs to these medical trips, pharmacies, or grocery stores, and they would be limited to two round trips a month or four one-way trips. And we would do this through an account-based system using our service with Lyft, United Taxi, and wheelchair transport, and allow people to book trips between eight a.m. and four-thirty p.m., either same day, or reserved trips up to two weeks in advance. It would be fare-free for the riders because of this partnership with the Florida Hospital paying for the rides, and the service is proposed to start at the beginning of December, on December third. In this item before you, it is a funding agreement between the City of Tarpon Springs and PSTA, and the reason for that is because there is an opportunity to have many other sponsors of trips like this within the city, and we want to keep that opportunity open. So the sponsorship relationship between the hospital is with the City of Tarpon Springs. And thank you so much, Mayor, for your hard work in making this a reality. So the Florida Hospital will be giving the City of Tarpon Springs twenty thousand dollars for this service, and that is the funding agreement between PSTA and the City of Tarpon Springs as well. Your staff has been excellent in making sure that we can advertise this program through city channels, and they've been very attentive in reviewing all of the information about the program, including helping us get people registered for the program through the senior center and the library. PSTA, in the meantime, has put together some additions to our current service, and we've hired a developer to help us put the dispatch service together. And we started to take applications so we could manage the accounts for services and riders who would be eligible for this service. And we're happy to have this new service start, and we've named it "The Healthy Hop." This is something that we've talked about across the county now, about this partnership and creating this new program, and I will tell you that Tarpon Springs is now a leader in innovative programs along with PSTA, and there are many other communities that are going to be looking at this program and how to sponsor their own. So thank you very much for your innovation, your forward thinking on this, and also your ability to get private dollars to provide these trips that are so desperately needed. So the action item, I believe, before you is to approve a funding agreement, and so that is on your consent agenda tonight. Happy to take any questions about the program and about the agreement.
I don't have questions, but I want to thank you for your hard work. And also want to thank my fellow commissioners for supporting this program. Mr. Licorice that worked very hard with me to get this thing going. The PSTA under the leadership of Mr. Miller. Florida Hospital under the leadership of Mr. Jason Dunkle. He's a great leader. Because of their contributions, now we have a senior transportation here in Tarpon Springs. This program is three years in the making and will be of significant value to the senior citizens. It will help them remain longer in their homes. The next senior project that I'd like to see in Tarpon Springs is to have a dedicated senior center, a building to be used for this purpose and to be placed for our seniors, not just to socialize, but also to provide programs and services. I'm hoping that everyone here on this board will support me and make that happen. Again, thank you for your work. Now, I want to go to the Commission comments and Vice Mayor Banther.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for coming out here tonight and for all of your work on this. I know I've said before, now that I'm on the PSTA board still, you know, our residents pay the same mileage rate as down county, but can't get the same services because of our location, and it's innovative ideas like this that help our residents and those most in need, you know, though, you know, though they'll receive these services. I'm very thankful to Florida Hospital for making this happen financially, and I look forward to other partnerships in the community that can help expand this. I think it's, programs like this are exactly what's needed in areas like North Pinellas County where it's hard to get the bus routes here, and also, you know, for, you know, a senior might be not wanting to take the bus to a doctor's office. This is a more private intimate approach to getting their health care, and I think it's great, and I look forward to having board support on this. Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Licorice, I'll go as well. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to thank you for your hard work on this project. This is truly a great thing for Tarpon Springs, and I do want to thank Florida Hospital. They are such a great asset to our community, so, and this partnership is just, it's wonderful. I can't express to you, I mean, how this will help our seniors, and like Vice Mayor said, you know, first of all, it's hard for them to get to the buses, you know, depending what part of town they live on, and then who wants to take a bus to a doctor's appointment? So this is just, again, such a great service, and thank everybody that's been involved.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Cassandra. I, of course, echo my commissioners, my fellow commissioners, and really appreciate this partnership because it's not only innovative, it's necessary, and it's going to be a great benefit to our seniors. I want to thank the mayor and Mark for helping on this project, and of course, I want to thank Florida Hospital for their continuous support of our community and their partnership for this new service. So I appreciate it, and it's a great idea, good program. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for presenting this, and thank you, Mr. Dunkle and Florida Hospital, soon to be Adventist Health, for your support, again, in the community. I want to echo that. It is great to have a partner like you in the community. Just a couple of questions. Mark, are we going to be notifying, is this going to be like a reminder and the water bills going out to the residents that we put out a couple times or four times?
Be multiple, multiple dissemination, including that.
Okay. And then I did see that this is going to be a report success to the city. So are we going to be keeping track of this from like the PSTA side of how often it's going to be used, et cetera? How is that going to work?
I would be delighted to come back and tell you how successful it will be.
Okay. I think that's good to keep track of it, so. And then, do the trips leave Tarpon, or is it only trips within Tarpon Springs?
Only trips within Tarpon Springs at this time.
And then, just I saw the list of like locations they could go to. Can that be updated if we have new businesses or closed businesses, or how do we inform you of that?
Yes, we'll have to keep that constantly. We made sure we got every addresses of this time that's involved. As addresses change, offices are added, we'll have to keep adding that with the occupational license process through there and stuff we'll add if there's additional sources or moves to go.
Great, yeah. I mean, this is an area of Tarpon Springs I think we missed out on overall with the lower income of our senior population or more mature population. So thank you, Mayor, for taking initiative and coming up with this with PSTA and everyone else you've worked with, so I'm in support of this.
Are there any public comments on this item?
Mike Cuscoot is six-two-three East Harpen Avenue. I come here basically for two reasons. One, obviously, you know, I support the hospital as vice chairman of the board, and this is part of their mission. This is part of the hospital's drive to be a community partner, number one. It's also part of their tenet, you know, the Healing Ministry of Christ, so they see this as an opportunity to extend what they do. The other reason I think this is such a good program is I'm actually a board-certified elder law attorney, and I deal a lot with seniors, and a lot of times, it's the seniors that have a difficult time when they lose their license or not able to drive, having accessibility to services that sometimes make it difficult for them. Either they shut in, they can't afford the travel, and this just allows them, like was said earlier, the flexibility of being home a little bit longer. So I want to thank you all for your vision, and as a resident, I also want to thank Florida Hospital, and I hope this program expands and other partners step up to the plate. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments on this item? You're none. Thank you very much. Sandra, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your hard work. Well, we're going to skip item number three, and we're going to go to the consent agenda, which is items four through eleven. I'm going to ask Vice Mayor to read the items of the consent agenda.
Thank you, and just for clarity, we're going to, we will come back to number three after this. Thank you. Okay, four is attorney's fees, trust and Danielle LLP, invoice five-seven-zero-nine-three, five special events, light up the bayou December twenty-fourth, Epiphany procession, January sixth, Lindy, January sixth, Martin Luther King Day parade, January nineteenth, six, authorized execution of senior micro-transit funding agreement, seven, increase file number eighteen-zero-zero-seven-zero-dash-C-dash-JJ, mobile communication services, eight, award file number one-nine-zero-zero-three-zero-dash-N-dash-RS, single source purchase of on-base maintenance and support, nine, award file number one-nine-zero-zero-three-one-dash-N-dash-CM, fire apparatus inspection, repair service, and maintenance, ten, award file number one-nine-zero-zero-three-four-dash-N-dash-CM, single source purchase of Chevrolet GM original equipment manufacturer parts and services, eleven, increase and review file number one-eight-zero-zero-four-zero-dash-N-dash-CM, single source purchase of Caterpillar original equipment manufacturer parts and services. Are there any items that anybody would like to pull? Yes, Commissioner.
I've got one, it's five B, just for a question about the Epiphany procession.
You want to pull or you want to just have a question?
Let's pull it.
Are there any public comments? Mayor, you want to add your motion?
Any commission comments on those items, with the exception on the five B? Are there any public comments on those items? You're not, I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuizis?
Yes. Commissioner Carr, you want to talk about five B?
Yeah, thank you. I've attended, obviously, the procession for many years, and last year, when I was walking around talking to business owners and residents, one of the concerns was the accessibility to bathrooms during this time. There's a lot of people concentrated at the top of the spring bayou along Tarpen Avenue. On Mahagan, I believe, Advisors, they open up their business for people to come in and use the facilities, but there's really, I think they maybe put a porta potty out there or something. I think there's an opportunity for the city to maybe put one also at the top of the, not necessarily at the top of the bayou, but maybe where the economic building is right now, also to show the ability and give the residents that are attending this the accessibility to use the restroom. I understand Craig Park has a public restroom, but I do think it's an important part to make sure that we're providing something. I don't imagine it's going to cost much to put one out there, but I think it would be a good idea to do that.
Craig before one, but I think we've got portable bathrooms now.
Well, we've got one that we have now, and that would be the plan. We would take that one and put that in the economic development building.
Okay.
Portable one that we've used when we were renovating. We brought it to you, we had told you about purchasing it, that we have a lot of circumstances where we renovate restrooms and stuff, so that would be a perfect opportunity to bring that one down and put it next to there, and we can do that for a pit.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission comments on this item? Any public comments on the item number five B? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuizis?
Thank you. Well, I personally would like to invite everyone to attend the grand opening of the Senior Transportation, which is going to take place December third at ten a.m.
It's going to be, we moved it to one, one p.m.
One p.m.?
Because of the legislative delegation, they're meeting in the morning. We've moved it to one while you're gone. We learned that the legislative delegation was meeting at the morning, and some of them may want to attend the ceremony, so we've moved it to one to allow them to leave that meeting and come if they can.
That's a great idea. Okay, so I'd like to invite everybody to attend the front of the hospital. Okay, and I'm feeling very weak, so I'm going to turn over the gavel to Vice Mayor Banther to conduct the meeting. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be excused.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Thank you. It was a special night for me.
Go rest.
Item, item, item number three, economic development, ad valorem tax exemptions, Karen Lemmons.
Thank you, Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. And we're here tonight to present an opportunity for the city to add another economic development incentive to our toolbox that we think will help attract new, larger businesses to the city and to help some of our existing businesses expand. It's called the Ad Valorem Economic Development Tax Exemption. What it would do is authorize the Board of Commissioners to grant ad valorem or property tax exemptions to qualifying new businesses to the city and businesses that are already in the city but want to expand, that are creating new jobs. It allows for an exemption for one hundred percent of the property taxes and up to ten years. We're always looking for ways to divert, to diverse, provide diversity, I'm sorry, to our tax base, and we think that this program would help do that because it would encourage new businesses to relocate to the city, especially larger ones that are providing jobs that pay higher than normal wage for the area. It would also encourage some of our local businesses to expand because the program would provide for tax exemptions, for additions to buildings, and for new equipment purchases. Going along with that, it would attract higher-wage jobs to the city, encourage additional investment, and then enable us to remain competitive with our neighboring cities and counties. Already thirty-nine counties in Florida offer this program, including Pinellas and Hillsborough, and about twenty-one cities have approved the exemption, including nearby Largo, Clearwater, St. Pete, Tampa, and Pinellas Park. Oldsmar currently is going through the process. St. Pete, Tampa, and Pinellas Park. Oldsmar currently is going through the process. This was created by the state legislature, and it's authorized under state statutes. So, a lot of the program is already enabled through the state statutes. The statutes require that any city that wants to create this program has to do it through a referendum. So, we would need to put a referendum question on the ballot in March. The referendum language is mandatory, and I put it up here for you to look at. Essentially, it asks voters if the city could approve property tax exemptions to new and existing businesses that would be creating new jobs for the city. Additional statutory requirements, again, the exemptions can be granted for a hundred percent of the property tax revenues up to ten years, or anything lower than that that the Board of Commissioners would want to move forward with. It's only the eligible ad valorem taxes for the city, so it doesn't affect any other government authority that's levying taxes. It's only eligible for brand-new buildings that are being constructed, or additions to existing buildings, or new purchases. So, land is not eligible, or replacement equipment is not eligible. And then, only the taxes on the improvements to the building are eligible. So, we continue to receive the current property taxes that we get on each, on each property. It's the incremental value of the addition or the new property that would be eligible for the exemption. And again, the goal of the program is job creation, so additional requirements, there's a minimum job creation that's based on the industry that's coming in. So, for a manufacturer or one of the targeted industries, it's a minimum ten jobs created. For an office, it's fifty. And for out-of-state or international export sales, those are businesses that have more than fifty percent of their sales as out-of-state, out of the country, and exporting is twenty-five. And then, again, the average wage for these new jobs must be higher than the average wage in the area. That would be determined by the Bureau Labor Statistics and depending on what the individual industry is. So, the next steps. Tonight, we wanted to just introduce the program and see if there was a consensus among the board to move ahead with offering this program. If so, the city attorney would draft a resolution for our next meeting on December fourth. That resolution would be a resolution of intent to put the ballot language onto the March ballot. January eleventh of next year is the deadline for the supervisor of elections to receive all of the ballot language, and then, March twelfth is the referendum. And then, if the referendum would pass by our city voters, then the city would have one year to adopt all of the parameters of our property tax exemption program. And then, upon adoption, if we would do that by ordinance, so it would take two ratings, any eligible business in the future, then, that would want to take advantage of this program, there's an application process, a lot of qualifying, and then, that application would come back to the Board of Commissioners as an ordinance. So, you would have to approve each individual exemption as you see fit. So, again, we look at this as a way of having another incentive. As opposed to the CRA, this is citywide, so this could help us in the North Anclot area, could help us with medical office buildings, could even help us with hotel. So, it's looking at the areas that are outside the CRA that could, you know, be the difference between coming here to Tarpon Springs or going somewhere else. So, those are the basic parameters of the program. Again, there is some flexibility in there, and if we move forward and go to the referendum, if it passes, we would have some time to put the program together and have it approved by you through ordinance. And with that, I can take any questions.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Though, thank you, Karen. This is a very innovative way to further attract people here to Tarpon Springs. I very much like that it's not just, like you said, in the CRA or any one part of town. That's very beneficial. What's the difference, if you could educate me besides the geography of, because before, I think it was saying somewhere that had something similar they benefited from?
That was a historic tax abatement program. So, the difference with that one, it was, that is only for historic structures, so it had to be a contributing structure in the historic district, and they were eligible for a hundred percent of the taxes, just like this, within the city only, for up to ten years. And that was based on the value of the improvements from what the building was valued at before they did their improvements.
So, it's along the same line?
So, this would be the same kind of a thing, but it doesn't have to be a historic building?
Very good. Well, I think that's a huge plus, and not that we don't want to, though, to focus on the CRA and the historic area, but, you know, there's other areas of Tarpon Springs we need, we need, we need to attract development to. So, I think this is a great idea. The Commissioner Seber?
Yes, thanks, Karen. I think this is a great benefit and incentive for newer existing businesses, obviously, to help them with their expenses of expanding or buying a new building and bringing them into Tarpon Springs. And I definitely support this. I just had a question about eligible companies and their application process. You said something about after we adopt this, it'll take a year. Is that a year before applicants can come to the city?
We have a, we have a year to create the program, but Pinellas, I've been working with some of the other cities in the county that has already created it, so I have a good template of what we want to do. So, the only flexibility we have is if we would like to add, we could potentially add a targeted industry like tourism, if we wanted to do a hotel to that, but we have up to a year to develop the program, but we don't have to take a year.
More than a year is, I guess, what I'm asking.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, now, does this include the CRA? Does not include the CRA?
It's citywide.
Okay, it does. My question is, I mean, you know, I'm all about bringing business to our community. That's something I've run on all the time. Just, you know, I'm concerned about with giving ten years of a tax break. Do we estimate what that could cost the city in revenue?
Yeah, there's two things. First of all, you don't have to give ten years. These are applications to you. You have all of the leeway to say yes or no, or five years or one year. It will all depend on the individual project that would come to you. So, it, and it would be, once the application comes in, it also goes to the property appraiser's office, and they come back with a report that tells us what the potential revenue is, what the potential, and I don't want to say lost revenue, because we're already getting the revenue from that property. It's just the additional revenue that we would be delaying receiving until a later time, a later time that the Board of Commissioners would set.
So, we would eventually?
And then, once that time period is up, then we get that, the full value of the property. And a lot of times, you know, I always say the but for, but for an incentive like this, you may not get anything. So, you have to weigh, you know, what you're getting now versus what you potentially could receive later in the future.
And so, when you're saying that, so there's an existing, an existing company, and they want to add on, so we, they'll still be paying their regular taxes that they've been paying us on the existing building, and they're adding on, and we could give them that incentive on the add-on?
Right. If you have an existing building that's putting on a big addition, we continue to get the property values, and as they rise, we get that every year, the value of the addition is what would be delayed if you would grant the abatement to them.
So, so every project that comes forward and they apply for this, we would have to vote on individually on how long we would allow?
Correct. How long, how much? You don't have to give a hundred percent either. You could say, well, you know, we want to give a fifty percent exemption for five years.
So, this would have to go up for referendum. If it passed, then we have a year from then to write the program?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Carr?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thanks for reiterating that every application's going to be reviewed. I think that's an important aspect. So, just so I understand a little bit better, if we have a new restaurant, let's say Chick-fil-A wants to come and build a restaurant on nineteen on the empty lot, they have more than ten employees, they could then apply for tax exemption for ten years, up to ten years, if it meets the parameters. Am I right in saying that?
It's only for targeted industries. It's manufacturing targeted industries. Retail is not part of this.
What is targeted industries?
Targeted industries are aviation, defense, life sciences, medical, information technology, biological sciences, business services. There are several of them.
Okay.
So, it's really meant for primary wage job creation for manufacturing and industry, not for retail.
Good. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I'm in total support of any incentives we can give to businesses that come into Tarpon Springs, hotels, anything that brings higher-paying jobs is a very important part of, I think, a great community. So, I'm in support of this. I'm looking forward to looking further into it if it does pass through the referendum, and looking at some guidelines, maybe some parameters in place. If it's a hotel, we might get max. If it's a X industry, we'd set the parameters. So, that should be pretty fun to look at, I think. How does this compare right now to the old, overall, the county and then the other cities around us with the ten years? Is that something we will be able to see when we're looking at this, putting the parameters in place and make sure we're competitive? Because if someone's trying to evaluate the building in Hillsborough County, first Tarpon Springs, and all they're looking at, obviously, we'll win from like the character and the charm and the close-knit community portion of it, but would we win on the tax portion of it?
Well, when the larger industries are looking at sites, there's a lot that goes into their selection of a location. A lot of it is access to transportation and highways and visibility and airports and rail and things that we lack, and that's why we don't have a large manufacturing base. So, this will help us to that extent, that we can expand perhaps into the North Anclot area. I could always look at how this, how the program has been used in the other cities. I know some of the cities have adopted and have never used it yet because they haven't had a qualified business.
Okay. All right. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
There is no vote on that side. Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
All right. Let's take in, we go down to special consent agenda. Item, item, item number twelve, award bid number nineteen zero 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 seven dash B dash JJ Cedar Street Brick Pavement Rehab from a Ferris Street to Pinellas Avenue. City Manager? Bob Robertson, you want it?
Good evening, Bob Robertson. Excuse me. Project Administration Department Director. Things beeping at me. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Public Works Department to request your approval to award the construction contract for the Cedar Street Rehab Project. This is for re-bricking that stretch of Cedar Street between our Ferris and Pinellas Avenue. In addition to re-bricking, a stormwater collection will be, system will be installed where there isn't one now. So, significant improvement there. Also, an existing two-inch galvanized steel water pipe will be replaced with a new six-inch PVC water pipe, which will improve water quality and fire flows. The low bidder is a reputable contractor that we've worked with successfully before, and the bid was under budget by about ten percent. And that's it. I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Board comments?
I do. I just want to thank Mark and Mr. Robertson for bringing this forward. We've gotten quite a few phone calls from the residents on that street, and I know we did a quick fix right now because it's like dips, the whole road dips. It's in terrible condition. So, we did the quick fix with the laptop and built it in and all. So, I will make sure I let them know that we're moving forward. It's been on the agenda, and I do appreciate it because that, you know, we keep to look out for our residents, the streets, you know, where our residents live, not only, you know, our tourist area, but where our residents live. And this was really bad condition. So, I mean, when it rained, they would put a cone out so people wouldn't drive through the dip, and that's how bad it was. So, again, I appreciate your work on this.
I will enter a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Item, item, item number thirteen, award bid number eighteen zero one six seven dash B dash JJ Cultural Center Rehab and Exterior Window, Window, Window Replacement. City Manager?
Yes. We'll have Bob Robertson up there. He's worked very hard on this project. If you have any questions, but staff doesn't have any presentation to make to you. We were bringing forward to you to award the bid for five hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred seventy-seven. All of us know what the issue's been in this building. The issue's been on the windows, and staff view that we should do like City Hall and replace them. The historical preservation board and others thinking that we should preserve them, both with good cases, both with good reasons. You had me as a board bring it before the board twice, and they reject the staff's proposal. I know how this board wants to maintain the historical aspect of this building, how they wanted that. So, what I'm bringing forward to you is for the option that we're talking about, the windows, I'm bringing forward for your approval, the option A, which is the recommendation Historic Preservation Board to preserve and restore the windows as opposed to replace those. And again, if you have any questions, anything Bob's worked very hard and studied it, we've looked at both aspects, we bid it both ways. Doing that and preserving the windows is a money savior on the project. It saves money. And again, we know how you feel on this board and about the preservation and wanting the approval, the historical preservation board to go forward. So, that's why we're bringing it forward to you with their recommendations on the windows to approve tonight and us to get started as soon as humanly possible to get that building renovated.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any public comments? State Chairman for the Record, you have, you have four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Terrapani. I live at twenty-two North Spring Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, and I am Chairman of the Preservation Board, and I sat on the Preservation Board when this item came to it. So, I want to give you some background. First of all, I'm really glad to see that the project's moving forward. The building's been deteriorated for a long time. It's kind of embarrassing to all of us, I think, including you, and I'm glad that we're moving forward. But I support replace, repairing the windows, not replacing it, which is option A. Since this building is within the historic district, all the exterior work requires approval by the Preservation Board. We'll review either approval or denial. In January, the city came with an application for the exterior repair to the brick, to the clock tower, to all those items, and replacing the windows. The replacing the windows was delayed because there was no evaluation of the status and condition of those windows. The rest of the work was approved in January. And then, on June fourth, at the June meeting of the Preservation Board, the applicant came back with an evaluation of the windows, and after careful consideration, and we had public testimony from longtime city residents and a member of the Florida Trust Historic Preservation Board, the HPB voted unanimously to deny the replacement of the windows and to recommend and to encourage the city to restore those windows. At that meeting, the Florida Trust Historic Preservation Board member who works at a historic restoration company and does this work all the time, explained that there will be an improved energy efficiency when the windows are repaired, and you have that caulking back in there, and you have all the items that have now deteriorated because the building, the windows have been not maintained for so long. And there are also, not to digress too much, but there are also lots of other alternatives to improve the energy efficiency, such as curtains inside the, on the inside portion of the window that don't change the view of the window. So, but there is other options to explore. But I want to talk about the Preservation Board's actions since the staff report erroneously states that the HPB made a recommendation. The HPB did not make a recommendation. The HPP is the final decision-maker about applications in the district, and the document I passed out to you just confirms that. If you look on the first page, the highlighted section talks about that all HPP reviews both private property as well as public lands, and you can understand why. If we, as a city, own property, we ought to be treated, and we ought to treat our buildings just the same as citizens in the district. On the second page of the handout, you'll see the termination by the board, and the board's actions and authority are to approve, approve of conditions, or deny the application. So, the HPB is a very different animal than your planning and zoning board, which does send you recommendations, and you make the final decision. Final item I wanted to highlight is, on the second page at the bottom, is there is an appeal process. And if an application is denied, an applicant has the right to appeal to you as a city commission. But in this case, and the code requires that it be done within twenty days of that written decision, that decision was made in June. There's been no appeal brought forward. There's no ability to reserve the right to appeal at some future date. You don't see that language in the code because it doesn't exist. So, the time for an appeal has passed, and the city is bound by the Preservation Board's decision. The most important reason to preserve this building is due to its historic importance to the town. It was our city- The most important reason to preserve this building is due to its historic importance to the town. It was our City Hall originally, and now it continues as a great building for cultural activities with exhibits and lectures. If you want to be remembered as the Board of Commissioners who didn't follow their own rules, even though everybody else in the historic district has to, and forever change the historic nature of this building, then go ahead and vote for option B, which I personally and professionally do not think you have the legal right to do because that option was not approved by the Preservation Board. But on the other hand, if you want to be remembered as the Board of Commissioners who value history, who value our historic buildings, and who renovated this building for the next generations, the vote to repair the historic windows is the right vote. And I think many of you share my concerns. I think you all recognize the important nature of this building and its prominent location on one of our major streets and located in downtown. And I encourage you to move forward with the work as a replace, excuse me, restoration, the option A that's described. Thank you.
Any comments?
Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I urge you to go with option A for the historic preservation of the windows. That's what I was alluding to when I came up here to congratulate Commissioner Carr with his daughter. This is the foundation for our children. This is their history. This is their roots. So many communities have lost their roots, and they're trying to regain them by trying to overturn what they have done, trying to improve their communities, and they can't get it back. We have so much beauty in Tarpon Springs and so much history. We need to preserve this in the historic preservation that it has been for years. Today, I walked around the building. I noticed, I guess you call it caulking, at the end of the glass, it's gone. Bugs can crawl through there, water can seep through there, which can do more damage than needs to be done. So I'm urging you to please support preserving the historic building, windows there, and going with A for the preservation of our history. And then later on, I'm going to come back with some others that I've noticed we are losing ground on in maintenance and preservation. And our new library, I don't know. I did notice today if it's been repaired, but for the last five weeks, and I did report it, we have vines growing out of the, where the roof is, where it meets the building. So something's wrong there. That means water seeping in at our beautiful new library. That can do a lot of damage. I'll go up there tomorrow because I reported, and I said we don't need to have vines and flowers growing out of the roof of our library. So this is called maintenance. And Mr. Lacorius, I give you a lot of credit, which I didn't do at that last meeting, so maybe you'll start talking to me, and I'll talk to you. I appreciate you looking at the value of the historic preservation because we all have long histories here of our families who use that City Hall. And please make a stronger program in the city of preservation because all of our old buildings are going, and the longer we wait, the more money it'll take to preserve them. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Mr. Trask, just so I follow the script correctly, is, do we entertain motion before board comments? Is that what's supposed to happen?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been incorrectly doing board comments prior to. I apologize. So the, 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 the recommendation be, be, be for us, as I've confirmed with, with, with Mark, is to accept option A. So I will look for a motion for that.
Motion to approve with option A.
Second.
Okay. Now, 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 we can, we can have our board comments. Thank you, Mark, for all of your, 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 your work on this, as well as staff, HPP, and members of the public. I know, you know, sometimes we have differences of opinion for, you know, preservation and what's going to be long term, but I think we've made the right choice here, assuming it passes, and I believe we should treat ourselves equally before the HPP board that I first served on. I'm glad that we're doing that today, and I would rather go with option A. And maybe learn down the road that wasn't the best thing than, than, than not give it a try and not keep up the historic preservation of our buildings and honor the, honor the approval of the HPP. Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, thank you. I believe in historic preservation. I believe in the value of the history of this building. I have concerns with restoring versus replacing. Looking at what the city did as far as their recommendations and advantages and disadvantages, the new windows will be energy efficient. The new windows will be impact resistant. The new windows will be rated withstand hurricane wind loads, recommended by the city staff. We'll place, we'll, we'll look to historical windows. So here at this building, we replaced the windows, and they still have the historical aesthetics, and windows will meet requirements of Florida Building Code. The difference between replacing and preserving is $38,000. So I don't think that that's a great difference as far as whether we replace or restore. I just feel that we could keep the aesthetics of the building and the historical value and, and, and of course, everything that the Historic Preservation Board is asking for. But I, I feel that we need to replace them just for the safety issues and, and, and meeting the building code. So I, I do not approve of preserving them.
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. I want to thank the HPP Board for, for reviewing all this criteria and, and for their recommendation and all the hard work they do to, to preserve the heritage in our community. We do have a lot of history here. And yeah, I weigh both options, but I think that preserving what we have is a better option at this point. Again, like Vice Mayor said, let's try it. If we learn that it wasn't the right option down the road, then, then we made a mistake. But I think that this is something that we really need to entertain at this time. And like Mrs. Terrapani said, there are other options for keeping out heat and elements with certain window treatments and whatnot. So I think it's something that we really need to entertain at this time. And I'm, you know, again, I can't thank everybody enough for caring about our community because there is so much heritage here. And I, I wish that we would have, maybe when it came time to repairing the windows in this building, that we would have went down that route, but unfortunately. But we have other buildings in the community that we can look at, and they, because so many of our historic buildings do need work, and we need to, we need to remember, I believe we have a list, we have a list going on, on different projects that we have on our historic buildings.
Remember, we, we came forward with a plan about how we're going to do those. Mr. Robertson developed the plan, how we're doing yearly inspections of all of our buildings like that.
Which really, we need to make sure that we stay on top of that because there's so much history here, and I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose any buildings due to being poorly maintained. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, could I add to?
Yes, ma'am.
My comment. I definitely agree, Susan. I think we waited a long time to get this done, and the deterioration is pretty bad. So we shouldn't wait until we're at a place where we should replace or restore when the building needs a lot of work. So we do need to stay on top of, of the buildings and what's needed and necessary to, to preserve them. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Bob, thank you for putting together your team and coming up with a maintenance schedule like you presented a few months, or last month, I believe. I think it's important to continue that. This isn't really a choice tonight as a commission because we don't have the authority to make a choice. It's actually a yes or no. Do we want to restore? Do we not want to restore? Mr. Trask, if you could help me understand this. If I were a resident living in a historic district and I came and was denied the application, and then I went out and repaired my windows myself in my own house, I would be against, I would be in code violation, right?
It would definitely be a code violation.
Okay.
The difference here is, is that, you know, if, if the city has appealed the decision of the board, they have preserved their right to move forward to bring it to, back to you as a commission as a whole. So if the motion fails tonight to adopt option A, then, and there was another motion to approve option B, it would have to be contingent upon a subsequent public hearing where you considered the application denial from the board. Under section 111.00, you have that right to do that. And there are some notice requirements that have to be completed, but you would have to have another public hearing to consider that denial before you would be able to move forward.
Okay.
Commissioner Carr, I didn't want to bring it up because in essence, I was agreeing with HPP, but I did reserve my right to appeal within 20 days after that second meeting. I reserved that right to appeal. I didn't exercise it. There's no sense bringing that up and doing that tonight and bringing that up because I brought forward their recommendation. But I did set forward the process if we wanted to do that, to do that. But there's no need for me to get into it because, in essence, although probably the public listening didn't sound like we were bringing the same proposal, we are, because my recommendation was option A.
Okay. I just want to make sure, overall, though, I mean, it's either a yes or a no. It's not really an option A or option B tonight.
Yeah, that's not how the backup's written. It's to go forward with option A.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Mark.
Or comments?
Just, 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 just one, just one quick question. We can put hurricane shutters up, right? I mean, we, we talk about concern of replacement with hurricanes.
The problem with shelters is all, you know, putting up, putting up those, what we'd have to do is we'd have to do the old traditional boarding up the building type thing.
But we have the ability to do that, I'm saying. It's not like we can't do that.
No, what we have to do, and probably with the amount of work with a hurricane to do and adding that building and boarding it, we would probably, what, what our plans was to look into is execute a contract with somebody, and if a storm's coming and stuff, to preserve those windows. Because obviously, if you put shutters up there, you're going to destroy the historical integrity of the building. You might as well do, you might as well go with a replacement because shutters are not part of what the building is. But what our plan is, is to either execute a contract, hopefully because of all we got to do, and be ready to traditionally board up those windows to protect them since they're not going to be impacted, since they're not going to be protected to storm, but we would do a boarding process to avoid as much as possible not losing them.
I would encourage that to happen. I think that would go in line with, that's not part of the motion tonight, but that would be in the future to go in line with the, with the, with the preservation, and then also with the concerns for a hurricane.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
That's one of my reasons for also having some concern, is that will be an additional expense to the city each time there's any kind of storm or hurricane that we have to pay for boarding of all the windows, which there are a lot of them. So just wanted to add that.
I've got one more comment. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
If this passes tonight, I would like to ask, it was brought up in one of the other meetings, I believe, to do a small write-up maybe of what the lead, the leaded glass is, to maybe do something inside the, the building. That talks about the history of windows and what windows are today versus what windows were in the past. Doesn't have to be something substantial, but that shows the difference between the glass in the past, how you can see the wavy lines, how you can see the sand dots in it. Something that shows the, the character in that maybe the commission made a conscious effort to not replace, but to repair and, and restore the history that we have. And there's an opportunity, I think, to educate the people that visit this for many, many years to come, if I could just make that recommendation also. Thanks.
Is that it? A roll call?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
No.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Very good. All right, we go to our next item. This is Ordnance and Resolutions. Item, item number 14, Resolution 2018-25 Fiscal Year 2018 Budget Resolution, City Manager.
Yes, Ron Herring is bringing this up. You recognize this every November. I think every November this comes up one time. So if you would go over that for us, please.
Okay. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. Resolution 2018-25 is being brought before you to budget for items that were not previously budgeted for in fiscal year 2018. This is a final budget resolution for fiscal year 2018, cleaning up some items within the budget there. In the cover letter, I've tried to summarize the items that are on the attached resolution. No reserves are being used to cover these items, and most of the items are being covered by revenues that have come in over budget. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Anything? Are there, are there any public comments? Seeing none. I will, I will, I will enter a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I go ahead and read that by title only?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we get in the record. Okay. So this is Resolution 2018-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending the budget for fiscal year 2017-18. That was a reading of Resolution 2018-25 by title only.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ron, again. This is my last time. I will, I will get to thank you, and I'm very happy to be ending my tenure on this board with using no, no, no reserve funds as we have for the past two years, I think. And that's much credit, not only to a, a growing economy, but, but, but to staff's, you know, staff's diligence and finding ways to preserve and, and also grow. So thank you very much. Anybody else? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Right? Miscellaneous. Item number 15, Gulf Road Property Purchase for, for Future Fire Station 70, City Manager.
Yes. This is another project I want to thank Bob Robertson because he did some extensive work on stuff. In essence, and this board knows, I talked to you all about it, at first, we were looking at this property for the possible home of a new fire station. We did our geotechnical testing and stuff. We found that there's a possibility of up to $110,000 of work that has to be done. So I didn't bring forward to you the purchase price of $249,900. After I didn't bring it forward to you, the property owners came back to us and offered us this property at $75,000 reduced to help with the remediation cost. Again, as we said before, there's a couple purposes for this property. One is the option for a site for our Gulf Road Fire Station, which, which estimated now, and that can change and alter, but between 2023, 2025, we've got to replace it. There's also another need that if there is another location or something we choose, that this property be very valuable possibly for such things as relocating recreation, relocating where the land might be. So, so this land has a lot of options. We have options to use the, use the land now until we build the new fire station from a passive park, a park and a playground, dog park, courts. As you know, we've got basketball courts. They're heavily used on Gulf Road, but they're at the mercy of the Baptist Church because it's on their property. So the variety of uses are. There's also some other areas that we may look at, then we may need to locate some city facilities too. So by having this land now, when we make the decision 2023 to 25, it gives us a lot of options. And with the reduced price, obviously, if we do something else with the property, the remediation possibly is not going to be as much as we put a heavy fire building on it. So that cost of remediation could be substantially less if we decide to use as another option. So it just gives us a piece of property that, that we have a lot of options to do with at a perfect location and anticipating for our needs in 2023 to 2025. And I recommend a person, Bob extensively worked on this project, can ask all the technical questions that you have. Want to thank the property owners. They do have another deal that if we don't agree to it tonight, they will go to option B. But I want to thank them because they gave us the first option to, to take it or leave it. They cut up very well when I turned them, didn't bring it forward the first time, went to their options, but they, they gave us the first option to choose yes or no. And that's what I'm bringing to you tonight. Again, Bob Robertson's got all the, all the answers to all the technical questions that you need on the property and what we need. So present it to you tonight to purchase.
Thank you. Are there, are there, are there any, are there any public comments? The, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got to pass the second, right?
You have to pass the gavel if you're going to second the motion.
Well, I guess it should go to Commissioner Seaver technically. You want, you want, you want the script, right?
Whatever.
He'll be back to you.
Hold on. Did you hear the first motion?
Did you, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call.
Well, I just want to.
Or comments?
I just want to mention something too before we get started pursuant to both your charter and section two dash two sixteen. You're going to need all four of you to vote in favor of this to move it forward.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
Mike Kuskuta, six two three East Harpen Avenue. As you all know, my partner and I are the owners of that property. As Mark indicated, we do have a backup contract. I did promise the city, Mark, that before I offered this property to sell, that I would give the city one last opportunity. I, I'd like to see the city get it, but if not, that's fine too. You know, for the reasons Mark said, and, and, you know, when we talked about this initially, the price was at, at two forty-nine nine. We knew in advance that there'd be some grouting because we had a environmental report that we shared with the city that suggested environment, that there would be some grouting. And, you know, for my partner and I, we had some plans, but, but obviously we're at a point now that we want to, we want to sell the property. And, and so with the reduction in the price, we actually received multiple offers, but we do have one pending backup contract. There's possibly a third, but, but it's, it's basically, it's the balls of the city's court at this point to decide if it's something that they're going to want to land bank for their future. So thank you.
Any other public comments? Are there any commission comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. As we pass the gavel along here. You know, real estate is not a, not a perfect world. You know, I can, I definitely understand people that might dissent to this item. But I think you have to look at the scarcity of land in, in, in the sense that Hills area. I mean, that's, that is literally it. I mean, there's nowhere else I could think that the city could purchase to use. I almost wish it didn't say Fire Station on the agenda because as the city manager pointed out, there's multiple uses, you know, you know, the, the, for this property that I would, I think we would tend to lean towards. So again, it's not a perfect world. I think, though, I would like to have this property under, un, 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 under the city's control. And then we can discuss what we want to use it for. Not, not going into blindly, we, 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 we know what our, what our, what our, what our, what our options are. But the board can then decide based off best use and, and, and remediation required, what we would want on that property. I think if we pass on this tonight, we are, we are giving up a very scarce piece of property in, in, in the sense that Hills area. I'm, I'm glad we were able, they were, they, they, they were able to come down in price. I mean, they had to for the, for the remediation. So I hope this passes tonight. I don't have any questions besides, can we still park on there when, when we eat at Jimmy's? Only question. So anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. So I was under the impression that this, if we purchased this property, it was to be used for the fire station, not for putting basketball courts or... That's how it was presented, is for a fire station. So.
Still that way? I don't.
Well, you're, you're saying tonight that maybe we can use it for other option, you know, we have other options for it.
Well, there's been some question for the commission, what do we do with it from now to when the fire station do? Also, I think the fire chief talked to you about some possible other options and some relocation, and that land would be perfect for that. So again, we're talking about dealing with something five years in advance. The other options is, you know, some commissioners, again, we're talking about, well, are we just going to sit the land for five to seven years? And there's, there's a lot of options we can do with that piece of land while we're in the side. So while it could be land for the fire station, it doesn't necessarily mean the fire station go there. Something could be relocated from another site to there to allow the fire station somewhere else. It just leaves us for, you know, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, a good insurance policy and a good place to go when we need to replace that facility. And that option won't be available if we don't, if we don't take the land now.
Okay. You know, and, you know, I just want to make sure, because we know that our current fire station is, is not in good shape out there. It's, it's got some issues. So I would like to, and I'm just putting this out there, just really nothing to do with this, but if we can move the date up to, to build a new fire station, I would, you know, we need, something we need to look at. My other question is, so I'd like to do it sooner than later, is on the remediation. Did we have full disclosure on that in the contract? Or is that necessary to be fully disclosed?
Well, from, from talking about, because that, that question's come up, and I know there are some citizens who are bringing up that question.
Right.
That's either college or weather and stuff. They fully know when we were doing the land that we were doing this full study on it. They, they knew, they provided that they, I don't know in the real estate world, because I'm not in the real estate, they didn't disclose. But I think we all knew, anybody who knows that land out there, the Sunset Hills land, know that's a problem in all of this stuff.
I understand that, I understand that. But my, my thing is, when you write a purchase contract, is that supposed to, should that be included in the purchase contract? Full disclosure.
That wasn't in the purchase contract, I don't believe. But again, in the purchase contract was that we were doing a full study of the, of the piece of land.
Can I respond?
Can you?
Yes. We, we provided the city, we had an environmental study done, okay, that suggested that there's, there's some loose soil. The city had its own environmental study done. So that you had two engineering reports that give you the condition of the property. But also know this, that condition is just not isolated to that particular lot. That condition runs along Gulf Road. You're probably, your current fire station has the same issues underneath. It's just when they built it, they didn't have to do what they do today. The high school, the administrative building, had to be grouted before they built the administrative building in the front. You know, talking with Mr. Lacorus, when the city was looking at that pool, they realized they had to grout because it's the same soil conditions. That whole section has the same loose soil conditions. There were rumors spread that, oh, that place is full of sinkholes, which is not true. It's got some loose soil, that's the purpose of the grout. The reasoning, we brought the price down is to allow the city some latitude in the cost of grouting. Whether it costs you seventy-five, whether it costs you a hundred and ten, it may not even cost you that much. Don't know. You had an estimate. And all depends on, on the structure and the weight of the structure you put on there will determine what grouting you, you need, if any. There are some contractors who looked at it that said you could build a different way and not have to grout. But the safest way is to grout. So if you're going to put a heavy structure on there, that's what you would probably do. Am I correct?
Okay, so. So.
We did not hide, we did not hide anything. Everything we did, we disclosed to the city.
I didn't realize that you had that, your report before we did ours.
Bob, go ahead and Bob, talk about it because Bob was involved in the process.
Yeah, we did receive, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, we did receive their information. So we did get full disclosure, but we went ahead and did our own testing. Not only did we do a full coverage of ground penetrating radar for the entire property, but we did soil borings to confirm what we saw on the radar to verify what was down there. So we have a really good idea, and we're really comfortable with, with what we're buying. And I'm confident, our engineer confirmed that they're confident that this remediation work will make this site safer construction, any kind of construction.
Right, right. No, I, I totally agree. I just wanted to make sure that, because I was not aware that we had seen their report. So, and I'm happy to know that. So, I mean, yeah, in Pinellas County alone, not just Tarpon Springs, it's rare to have a vacant piece of land to purchase anymore. So. All right, that answers my questions for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. I think where the confusion comes in, Commissioner Kikta, is when it came before us last time, it was just asked to approve the purchase due diligence, and we weren't presented with this. Because I'm in the same boat that you were, I didn't have any idea that there is loose soils in, on this property. But I think it was, it sounds like the city knew that already, but we just didn't know the details behind it. So that's the area that we're, that's why we're confused right now. Did we have the information? Did we not have the information? It's good to hear that we did have the information. It's good to know that we did our due diligence from that standpoint, decided the two fifty didn't work out. And then the property owners came back and said, well, we understand that it could be up to a hundred and ten, but we're going to reduce it to seventy-five for you. Bob, can you touch on that for me on this hundred and ten number that we're looking at and basically how grouting works a little bit more?
Sure.
So I have a better understanding.
Yeah, just very briefly, what they discovered is it's karst geography, geology, which basically means it's, there's voids underneath there. It's, you know, contained within the limestone, which is why there aren't, you know, you don't see any subsidence out there now because it's supported, but there's voids down there. So what you do is you basically inject grout into the ground and fill those, those holes. And the hundred and ten thousand is based on an estimate that the geotechnical specialists gave us. It's a high-end number, so I'm not sure it'll be that much, but they've got to be conservative in their estimate.
Okay. How does this elevation-wise, how does this compare to where the current fire station is today or anywhere?
It's approximately the same elevation. So any changes, construction we do will have to take floodplain into account.
Do you know what the elevation is there at all?
I don't know off the top of my head what it is, no.
I guess the other option would be to potentially use eminent domain. It's not the most fun route to go to obtain property. Overall, this piece of property isn't a lot of money compared to what some of the properties are in the area. I think the previous owners paid two hundred and fifty for it some years back also, and then have also paid taxes on it. So with, I guess, the environment that we're in today, with property values going up, it's, I think this is an opportunity for the city to really purchase a piece of property here. Just to have as an option. And then if we need to sell it, we could sell it in the future date. But I was the one, Commissioner Kikta also, and if I could address you, that asked questions, what do we do with the property in the meantime? If we purchase it, we don't want to just let it sit there. We want to make it a useful piece of property if the city's buying it. And so that's why I asked about what can we look at? If it's basketball courts, if it's a small dog park, if it's a small passive park? I don't really know what it could be, but I don't think it makes sense to own property as a city standpoint and just have it sit there vacant. And so that's what I was saying, what can we do with it? If it is the right site for the fire station, what can it be in the meantime over the next four years or so, five years or so during that time process? So with this overall, can we talk again just about the current fire station where it's at? Because we've got issues with space there, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Ray, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, if we decide to put something else before we build a fire station, so we wouldn't have to grout until we knew exactly if we were going to put the fire station, because we'd probably have to do more grouting because of the, the weight of the station and the equipment? I mean, I don't.
Well, my recommendation would be to go ahead and do the remediation to make that site ready for anything we wanted to do. But that may be have to, you know, depending on funding, that's not in any budget right now. So that would have to be worked out based on timing and what the city manager needs.
And again, that's a lot of your choice. If it was going to be a passive park and nothing, if you put courts on it, there may be an area of the land.
Correct.
You know, that we can put those courts on that doesn't have those voids. And so there's a lot of options of what we want to do and how. If we just want to put a passive park, make a nice place for to sit or something, a dog park, you're not going to have any weight on the land much for dog park or anything else. You know, no one walking across or parking in that land in all the years. Cars are parked there, it's fell on the ground or anything. So there's a lot of options we can do, and what we would do is they'd be real low-cost options where obviously we get our three to five to seven years out of what, even a basketball court pouring, that wouldn't be that much money. Definitely a dog park, you know, wouldn't be a lot of money. A passive park wouldn't be a lot of money. So, you know, this board would look at and see what can we do to serve the community out there? As you know, there's, there's not a lot of places. In my day, all the schools were open. So we had playgrounds, we had fields, we had everything, because you just go to school property. Well, now the schools are locked up like Fort Knox. So really, in an area where you've got a lot of kids and stuff, there's really, there's really not a lot of places to go and stuff. So we could do whatever or a place to go sit or walk your dog to and sit on a, on a bench, even though it was in the park. You as a board have so many options with that piece of land to do and get your value for the money out of it for whatever goes on in the future of it. So again, it's that direction of this board, what we do with it, and there's many good low-cost options to do and hold that land. Obviously, the, the, the problem is, we know that fire station is probably going to cost four million dollars. And four million dollars, your penny money, it's going to take us some years to build up and do and, and design and stuff. We'll build it as soon as we can, but it's probably still going to be three to five years out because we know from building the other fire station that this one's going to cost more. So, so again, that's all we'll be looking at if there's opportunities. When we get the tower issue resolved, there's a pot of money, there may be some other, there may be some grants to help with a new station that will speed it up. So again, that's the other option. If something happens with a grant or ability to speed it up, we've got that piece of land there and sitting. We don't have to go hunting. Yes, we've already looked at building it at the present site, but you had to build a couple, it's not going to be an ideal fire station because we're going to go up and two-story fire station on a little piece of land. That's not ideal, but we can do it. So again, this just gives us so many options to do for a rather, rather low price. And again, options to use the property while it sits vacant.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, as Mr. Kuskuta said, there's loose soil all up and down that street, so probably grouting would be necessary on any portion of that land. And I agree that this is a good deal, and I feel that something should be done in the meantime, however we can use it or it's best used so that it's not sitting vacant. Were there any other comments? Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Come in. All right, very good. Okay. Item number sixteen nine zero one, Bu- Bu- U Avenue property purchase, city manager.
Yes, this is another property I've been looking at for a while. Again, this is adjacent to our Little League field. This is a rather good piece of land and it abuts a right-of-way that we have. I think it's, it was planned to be a road or something, but the property owner is a former city employee. We have been talking about it with him for a long time. I know he probably offered it to the Little League to buy many, many years ago. He even offered it up to the Little League to buy. We've been looking at it. We finally were able to forge a deal and get the property for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The money will be from split between recreational impact funds and local option sales tax. So the money is there for it. I think it'll be a great use. You have, you have in your, you have on the dais, a letter from the Little League board supporting it. We've got a representative from the Little League in the office. I want to thank Jay, he's the one we've been working on, on the renovations of field. We're going to do some good things with those fields. This money does not affect the money that, that we talked about of the renovation. This was, this is separate money. This is, so this does not take away from any money from the Little League, from the renovations we had talked about. And this just gives us a plenty more options for the, for the growing usage and the teams and the league and stuff. And I'm real happy to bring this forward into, because it's been a long time. We've been looking at that or the one other property that's there. And, and this one's the more ideal one because it butts up on city property on both sides. So it gives us a huge area, and it'll be advantage to the community, the Little League. And I highly recommend moving forward with this purchase. It is, it did come in, the appraised value came in higher than the cost of it and stuff. So the appraisal's there, the price is right, and I look forward to all of you. Again, it's another case where all of you have to approve it. So look forward to doing that and utilizing that property for the Little League.
Thank you. Are there any, are there, are there, are there, are there any, the, the public comments on the side of the night? Seeing none? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
I'm in support of this item tonight. I want to thank Mr. Mills, who is here tonight. I think we, 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 you know, agree by the temperature in town and the emails that the league and the city are, are, are in the best spot it's been in a, in a, in a, in a very long time, and both are working together to improve those fields. And thank you. Thank you, Mark, for being proactive and looking to, 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 to grow that area. You know, Commissioner Carr and I played on these, on, 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 on these fields together. I didn't really play that much, because I'm pretty bad at team sports. But he was pretty good. But I was on the one, the Tarpon Sports and School, but the one that has to just show up and then go to the... I, I, I wanted the free coke after the game, that's why. So I'll let, I'll let Commissioner Carr talk, talk first on, on, on the side of the night.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Thanks Vice Mayor, uh, I, I'm a proponent of acquiring a land around this, uh, Sisler Field, I think it's pretty important, I remember as a child, when I played, my mom and dad was at the park down mirrors, like, down, way down the road, and a sand pit, basically inside the road where you get stuck when you're trying to leave afterwards, because there's not enough parking. Um, so this is great to see the opportunity to purchase this land. I was an advocate to buy the house actually next door also, when it was for sale, but I think we missed out on the opportunity a couple times. Uh, so hopefully, we won't miss out on that opportunity in the future, but, um, this is, this is a good deal, I think, for the city, and the safety of the residents, the safety of the ballplayers, the safety of the parents, the grandparents that come and visit. Um, it's an important aspect to have parking, and that's a struggle that we have with a, a few of our sports fields, I know at Discovery, and then also at Sisler Field. Uh, so I'm in full support, when I ran for commissioner, it was one thing I supported was recreation, and expanding recreation any way we can. So I don't have anything further, other than, uh, I hope we can put some shrubbery up, and maybe a little bit of landscaping to make it a little more attractive, and if we need to put up some additional protective netting, uh, to prevent broken windshields or dented cars as well, so thank you for bringing this forward.
Uh, Commissioner Seber?
Uh, I don't really have any, uh, comments, I agree with both of you, and I'm definitely in support.
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you, um, I think this is a great opportunity for the city. Um, we do need to expand parking out there, and, and like, um, Commissioner Carr said, hopefully we can put up some shrubbery and plants and stuff to, to make it look nice. This is a great opportunity for us. Um, parking is a commodity out there, and it's tough on the weekends, when, when everybody's playing, so um, I, I, I'm so happy that Mr. Hig decided to, uh, to sell, I forgot he lived there, but I'm really thrilled about it, I think this is gonna be great, so, you know, we've allocated ninety thousand to spruce up the fields this year, and so you're saying we could use this money as well?
This is separate money, yes, this is a separate fund of money.
Wonderful, that, that's, that's great to hear, thank you.
I just got one other comment too, um, I sent Mark some stuff about George Sisler, who the field's named after, and this is where the St. Louis Browns uh, had spring training in the early nineteen twenties, um, from, which is pretty incredible, and Mark had mentioned to me that they actually moved to Baltimore and became the Baltimore Orioles at the time, uh, or are now the Baltimore Orioles, so I think it's also important to incorporate some type of history with Mr. Sisler, when we look at the renovations of the field too, I know it's not necessarily on this agenda item, but just something to talk about as well, to, to show the history, because one of the things, I grew up playing at Sisler Field, I had no idea who Mr. Sisler was. Um, I had rumors that Babe Ruth played, played there, and I was like, is this stuff true, I don't know, is this old folk tale? Um, but then come to learn, like, there's pictures of Babe Ruth here fishing in Lake Tarpon, and he really did play here, and the St. Louis Browns really did play in Tarpon Springs as a spring training, you can find old historic articles in the Tampa Bay Times or St. Pete Times, in the archives, it's really neat to see some of the history that happened in Tarpon Springs in the twenties. Uh, so there's a lot of history in this field too, so it's good to preserve this area, and as the baseball fields, and still to encourage, um, our children to play softball and baseball.
Yes, there's real interesting, real interesting things we can do with the history of that and play on, in fact, I was, I told Commissioner Carr, my email to him, my usher at the Rays, where my Rays seats are, is one of, I think, only nine existing players left that played for the St. Louis Browns. Of course, not at the time when Babe Ruth was there, in the fifties, he actually played in there, told the story, and of course, everybody thinks, well, they're the St. Louis Cardinals. The St. Louis Cardinals was their biggest competitor, they, they competed against each other, but actually, in, in learning more after Commissioner Carr sent that, although they did become the Baltimore Orioles, the St. Louis Cardinals are actually the one who put the statue, statue of Mr. Sisler at, in St. Louis, so the, so the Cardinals have been taking up some of the history of them, so maybe in the future, if not the Orioles, you know, since the Cardinals, maybe we can get some help or some recognition from them, but there's some good ideas that we're adding to the list, uh, as we do the other places to honor some history there, and it'd be nice, we could find out who made that statue, we get a nice replica and stuff, and have a rep, have a statue there for them, in the future and stuff, when we do all the renovations and stuff, but that will be some interesting thing for people to learn, the actual history of Sisler Field.
I had no clue about this, I thought that was just the name of the person that gave the land back in the day, so that's, yeah, Commissioner Carr, since I met him, has always been one to bring up and know, it's these historical facts, it's always very interesting. That's absolutely amazing, I think we definitely in the future should have something, uh, put there to, to memorialize that, I think. Right, that's it, that was good.
By the way, George Sisler is a Hall of Famer, and he had a record that was just recently broken by Ichiro Ziziki, a few years ago with the Seattle Manors. So, he's really, uh, his, like, he is, he has his history in baseball, it's pretty neat that he's got a part of it here in Tarpon.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Hey. This item here is, uh, Ford Balance appointment, I guess we're on the same circuit like PSTA, where we share with Oldsmar and Safety Harbor, and the Oldsmar mayor is coming off, so, well, sorry, yeah, mayor's coming off, so we'll need to appoint somebody for that, um, the mayor has said he's fine not being on that.
Yeah.
Um, obviously I can't, because I'm coming off in April. Um, keep in mind as well, somebody to come in, in, in my spot at PSTA in April as well. So, keep that in mind, um, when thinking about, i- 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 if, 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 if you wanna do this, so does, does anybody have any inclination to be a part of Ford Balance?
I, I just feel like I will take your place at, uh, PSTA, and I only have a year after that, so this is a, a two-year commitment.
Commissioner Carr?
I'm interested in this, uh, overall, um, I still need to work out a few details at my work, um, if this is something that the board's interested in, maybe appointing myself. Uh, maybe I have a couple more weeks, because I only had a few days to figure this out, to talk to my management about the ability to leave. It doesn't sound like it'd be a problem for the situation, um, again, it's, it's good exposure for the city, I think, uh, especially for North Pinellas, because not a whole lot of Ford Pinellas involvement in our town at all. Uh, I do think it's a great opportunity for us to have a face, and I'm not, I'm pretty willing to say anything I need to, to get in front of someone for Tarpon Springs recognition, and bring projects up here, and money and funding, so um, I'm happy to look at this, if I just maybe could have a little more time, um, just to get the proper approvals to, from my.
We could appoint him tonight, and then if he decides he can, we just, we just come back, that's right.
Yeah, I, I, I would say to, because, you know, they want an answer, I, I'd say to appoint him tonight pending his ability to work it out, then if he couldn't work it out, then we'd have to tell him, listen, we need to bring it to the first board meeting in December and change, but do that now, so if he lets me know in two weeks, I can let them know, because they're ready to do all their pay, so, so.
Yeah, that works for me.
Yeah, I've gone to a couple of meetings, and definitely think that we need, uh, someone from up here, so that'd be great if you could do it.
Yeah, I'm in Clearwater already, so it's, I mean, what's still happening.
Uh, I think all of PSTA, but me, is on that board, and it definitely needs North County of representation, because they have some wild ideas, I'll just leave it at that, so. Commissioner Kikta, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I mean, I, I would volunteer, but again, I'm up for reelection, so we don't know how that'll turn out.
Very well.
What, how often do they meet, do we know, I forget, I remember seeing the email.
Once a month, on a Wednesday, once a month, from like, one AM, or one AM, one PM to about four PM, once a month.
Oh, okay, so.
And they meet, I think it changes, they meet all around.
They, they do, they change locations.
They do change locations, okay.
But they're all, believe me, they're all central, they don't, they don't, they don't move out and.
Came up to Tarpon Springs one time, right?
Yeah.
That'll be your job, okay, um, are, are there, are there any public comments?
Did you want to do a motion to appoint Commissioner Carr then?
Yes. Well, I was gonna ask, okay, um, I, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint Commissioner Carr.
Second.
Any, any public comments, or comments, roll call?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Carr. Hey, that, uh, do we have anything else, no? That, that, that concludes our regular, uh, session, well, we, we have, we have our staff comments first, I apologize. Got my little script here, how they have it, uh, Police Chief?
Uh, thank you Vice Mayor, just wanted to comment again, um, our new K-nine, just started a K-nine school with Tommy, his name is C.K., obviously in the honor of Charlie Conda, um, his official name is Charlie K., but he's gonna be really good. Tommy's really been training him for a month, and, and the amount of training, and, and how this dog's received that training is amazing. So I have all the confidence in the world, they'll do very well, and, uh, he'll be very successful, so we'll keep you updated on that, thank you.
Thank you. That's the attorney.
I have nothing further.
By the way, welcome.
Thank you very much for having me, I'm looking forward to, uh, to being here every Tuesday night, that I can, so.
Uh, Mr. City Manager?
What I'll remind you is, again, we're on holiday schedule in December, so we'll be meeting on the first and second, meeting December fourth and December eleventh.
Uh, so, uh, so, uh, so, uh, Madam Clark?
I just also would like to congratulate, uh, Commissioner Carr and his wife on the birth of their daughter.
Thank you.
And also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
And I as well want to wish Commissioner Carr a congrats, I've obviously texted him, as, as we're friends, but I would mention to say, Commissioner Carr, that's the reason why you're tired, it's not from lack of food, as you claimed earlier today, I think it's from having a newborn, as I can say, as I had two, and Lord willing, that's all I have, so. The mayor, uh, gave me some comments here to read, uh, Friday, November sixteenth, uh, is the farm share program, this, this is a very good program. It's over at our CAP Center, and, um, it's sponsored by Representative Chris Sprouls, and I believe, it's not mentioned here, I believe also our new state senator, was it Ed Hooper, is his name?
Yes.
Ed Hooper, yeah, so that, this is a great program, and that's nine thirty to eleven AM on, 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 on this Friday, and it's, you can go, it's no questions asked, it's no requirements, you can get fresh produce, so anyone in need, or know anybody in need, that's a great program. Saturday, Saturday, the twenty-fourth, the Small Business Saturday, downtown to the Sponge Docks, remember to, to shop local this holiday season. Saturday, November twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, our Thanksgiving Arts and Crafts Festival, Port Street downtown from ten AM to five PM. Saturday, the twenty-fourth, is the Wine Walk, East Tarpon Avenue, four PM to eight PM, and, uh, welcome our new businesses, Sandra Dorm Booth Creations, I believe you were at that, and Sandbar Architecture. And I need to go back to rest of the board, Commissioner Kikta, any comments?
Um, I, I as well want to, um, congratulate, um, Commissioner Carr on the birth of your daughter, she's absolutely beautiful.
Thanks.
And, uh, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, Commissioner Seber?
Yes, I want to welcome you, Tom, uh, appreciate you coming on board, and, uh, look forward to working with you. Uh, also, congratulations for me too.
Thank you.
Um, and happy Thanksgiving, and the Wine Walk is also on the docks.
On the docks, yes, it was on in my notes, I had to re-visit here with the mayor, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, uh, thank you all for the well wishes, and all the text messages, phone calls, the residents, Facebook likes and everything, with, uh, my daughter being born, uh, my wife is recovering well, my daughter is growing, wanting to eat all the time, and we've learned how to change diapers very well now, and I wasn't a very, I wasn't very good at first, but I've got it down pretty quickly, so uh, we have a lot to be thankful for here, um, in my family, but we also have a lot to be thankful for Tarpon Springs also. Um, I am thankful for the staff, and, uh, all the hard work that's going on, and I hope we recognize all the things that we're very thankful for during Thanksgiving, uh, and upcoming, uh, week here. Um, there is, Mark, I want to ask one other thing, I know I've brought it up in the past, if we could make a, an agenda item on it as a design guidelines for, um, some of the highway districts, and, uh, if it's Ultra Nineteen, Pinellas Avenue, Tarpon Ave, and US Nineteen.
Yeah.
Uh, if we could just have a discussion part of it, and then we could also look at some of the other cities, like, uh, Winter Park or Ebor City, um, and have a couple examples of how some of these commercial buildings, um, are I guess more in character with the, the historic parts of those towns. Just to have a discussion and see what we, uh, could potentially do to encourage, uh, that charm of Tarpon Springs too. So, uh, good job tonight, Vice Mayor, uh.
Last one hopefully, you know.
Happy birthday to Vice Mayor.
And happy birthday, yes.
Twenty-five years old. All right, that concludes our regular session at eight oh nine.